Call to order the December 13th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And I want to start off by wishing everybody a happy holiday season. And this is our holiday edition of the council, our last meeting of the year. And we're very happy about that. Before we get started, we need to bring this meeting to order. And the first thing of business I'd like to do is do the pledge of allegiance. So if you'd join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt an agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move right into recognitions, reports, and presentations. Our first recognition report presentation is Pinehurst D.A.R. Walter Heinz Page Memorial Presentation. And it's an honor to be joined by Ms. Jardle of the Pinehurst D.A.R. for her presentation on trip to Westminster Abbey and the wreath-laying ceremony at the Page's memorial.
Good evening, and thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to come and share this information with you. My name is Nancy McGinnis-Jardle, and I'm almost a Cary native. We moved to Cary when I was three, when my father became the minister at Cary Presbyterian Church. And so my sister and brother and I grew up here, and I'm a proud member of the class of '72. And the Pinehurst connection will become clear in a second. My husband Randy and I live in Durham. And I joined the Pinehurst Daughters of the American Revolution chapter, however, because that's the area where my Scottish ancestors settled, and we still have a lot of family in that area. So that's the reason that I'm representing Pinehurst here tonight. Walter Heinz Page was my hometown hero, and still is. And through Daughters of the American Revolution, a couple of years ago, I met members of the Walter Heinz Page chapter in London. They were established, actually, in 1923, so 95 years ago. And in meeting them, I pointed out to them that the centennial celebration of the end of World War I was approaching. And also, as you know, that's also the, this is the centenary year of Walter Heinz Page's death. And he was born in Cary, as everyone knows here, gathered. And he died and is buried in the Bethesda Cemetery in Pinehurst, North Carolina. So those are the connections. And so, again, Cary is home to me. And Walter Heinz Page was at home wherever he was, but he was a beloved son of North Carolina and did so much for the state, the nation, and, as I'll speak about in a second, for the world. So after the meeting, the women from London, it seemed like a wreath-laying ceremony might be the most appropriate. And so I offered to spearhead the efforts and talk to different people. And earlier this year, I contacted Westminster Abbey. And I asked if we might have use of Westminster Abbey for a wreath-laying ceremony on November the fir-, I mean, November the 11th, 2018, on Armistice Day. And I got the most polite letter back, email back, saying that unfortunately, that the Queen had used of Westminster Abbey on that day for the national observance of the centenary of the armistice. So I wrote back immediately, and I asked about November the 12th. And again, had a speedy reply that said that would be fine. So we proceeded from there. And we were able to have the ceremony in what's called the Chapter House. I'll show you this in a moment. And this is in Westminster Abbey. It's not the main sanctuary of Westminster Abbey, but it is a wonderful historical part of the Abbey where really important things occurred. And that is where the marble plaque that the British erected in memory of Page is located. And that was put into place in the summer of 1923. So at the event, there were five speakers. Let me show you that. Let's see. All right, so what you're looking at in the top photo are some paintings from probably the 1200s in the Chapter House. And this was called the Chapter House because it's where the Benedictine monks came and talked and studied a particular chapter of the Bible each day. And so below that, you'll see the actual plaque that is in memory of Walter Heinz Page. And in the very bottom, it says, "The Friend of Britain in Her Sorest Need." And this is particularly poignant because, as you know, this was the end of World War I. And no one laying this marble plaque had any foreknowledge that there would be a World War II yet to come. But there were five speakers. In the center, I'm there with U.S. Ambassador Woody Johnson, who attended the service and spoke. He was one of the speakers. And he's laying a wreath here, you see, in the, right under the plaque. And above, you can see the two of us again making our remarks. And these are all the people who spoke. There would be, well, actually, more than all of the people. But the gentleman in the middle is Cannon Anthony Ball. That really is his name, Cannon Ball. And next to him, Adrian Pittman, who is the Walter Heinz Page representative from London. And I'm next to her, and then the ambassador, and then Jacqueline Wade, who's also from Pinehurst, who is head of the North Carolina units overseas, D.A.R. chapters. So there were about 15 or 20, no, I beg your pardon, I'd say 25 of us there, both British and American, for this service. And it really was an actual service. As you see, the clergyman was the one who conducted it. And it was a service to give thanks for the life and service of Walter Heinz Page. So when Cannon Anthony Ball spoke, he went through the history of the place where we were speaking, which I thought was extremely meaningful. And then the three of us representing D.A.R. spoke. And my comments focused on, I pointed out that for the first 59 years of Page's 64-year life, he lived and worked in the United States. And so I shared some of the things with the group about that. And actually, really appreciated the proclamation that the mayor and his staff prepared, because I read every word of the proclamation from the town of Cary, saying why this man was so important to our own history and to the history of the United States and the world. So, and I want you to know, this was so meaningful to the people there, I think particularly to the British attendees, because for a person to be honored and remembered in his hometown or her hometown is not all that common a thing. And the way that it was worded and the sincerity of the remarks really made an impression on the people gathered there. And the ends of my remarks had to do with the final five years of his service, which from 1913 to 1918 were as ambassador to Great Britain from the United States. And Page actually did a very extraordinary thing, well, he did many extraordinary things, but his service there is so remarkable because he continued to lobby President Woodrow Wilson, who had appointed them. They were friends, they met as young men. And he had helped Wilson in having some of Wilson's earliest writings published and had remained friends. So anyway, it became very clear to Page, in the position he was in, in London, in a country at war, in a democracy at war, that the United States really needed to come to the aid of this country and this democracy. And as you can appreciate, Woodrow Wilson had a different perspective. He was an ocean away. We have a very large contingent of German-American citizens. The idea of fighting a war somewhere else was not at all appealing to many Americans. So there was a real strain there. And after the Lusitania was sunk, Page was beside himself and actually tendered his letter of resignation, which Wilson declined. But he felt that our response to that was so meek and mild that it just, it wasn't appropriate. But anyway, the two of them continued on with their relationship. And again, this was a relationship all by cables and letters. And I've brought one of the three volumes, I hope you're familiar with, but if not, please, please get familiar with them, because these are Page's writings. And the third volume contains most of his writings to, a selection of his writings to the president. But anyway, his, as you probably know, his health declined during this time. And he was thrilled, of course, once we did come in in 1917. A British friend of his wrote that the most liberated man in Europe, when that happened, was Walter Heinz Page. So anyway, it's an extraordinary relationship between an ambassador and a president, and well worth everyone studying and considering. At the end of the service, something really extraordinary happened. A British attendee came over to my husband and me, and he said, "That man saved our country." And I thought how amazing that someone who obviously was not alive at the time still had that deep sense of appreciation and affection for Walter Heinz Page's memory. The other thing that made that particular area so poignant to us was the canon said that that was actually where democracy started in England. The Magna Carta is older than this, but about 150 years later, the king and the barons got together in this room and laid the seeds for what actually became a functioning democracy in England. So that added a lot to the gravitas of the advent as well. So I'll leave you by saying that with the centenary of Page's death coming up in just a few days, that'll be December the 21st, please keep him in your thoughts, his work and service in your thoughts. And I encourage you to, as I said, to read his words when you have a chance, and just to get a sense of what it was like to have a journalist who was an ambassador and was so good with words and so candid with his observations. And lastly, there is a video of the 25-minute service, and I have sent that to Ms. Johnson, and she's going to send that to each of you. So feel, please feel free to download that and watch it at your leisure. But you will have a chance to hear particularly what the canon had to say and what the ambassador had to say, because neither person took this as a perfunctory type of event. They had done a lot of work about it, and the ambassador even contrasted his experience with Page's and said, "You know, I have a staff of a thousand." He said, "He was doing this on his own. He was writing all of these communiques and taking all of this on his own shoulders." And it, I mean, it's something unique in history, to American and British history. So anyway, I will also leave for your archives, because I think you should have a program of the event itself, and an article that's in the D.A.R., Tarheel Patriot, that also highlights, I want to give a moment of credit too, to your two Cary D.A.R. chapters, because they both participated as well, one in sending a proclamation and another by giving the background, a lot of background information about Page. And so it was a labor of love, and I, again, am so appreciative to you for sending the proclamation. The canon got one, the ambassador got one, and they all got Cary pins. So thanks very much.
Thank you so much. That's fascinating. I look forward to the video. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, we move to our next presentation, which is the Employees and Team of the Year presentation. Last week, I was joined by fellow council members to attend the employee appreciation lunch, and the counter said there were 641 people that went live, which is pretty cool. And we got to recognize the best in 2019, and you guys are it. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Steigl, who's going to elaborate a little more.
Thank you, Mayor. So all you guys got to come up here now. All right? Please. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, it's an honor to be standing here with the town's 2018 Individual Employees of the Year. So we'll start first with Betsy and Dan. So Betsy, Winnaker, and Dan Clinton. Congratulations. Congratulations. And for the first time, our 2018 Team of the Year, the ACES team, Armando Bake, Rachel Baransky, Elizabeth Pearson, and Sam Trogdon. For those of you who don't know these outstanding winners, I'll take this time to provide you with a few highlights. Betsy is an operations analyst in the Public Works and Utilities Departments, and has been instrumental in the successful implementation of the Salesforce-based Work Order System. But I think Scott Heck would say she's kind of the one that keeps him sane and keeps public works going. Where's Scott at? Right? Right, Scott? Okay, good. Dan is a senior project manager focusing on stormwater in the Water Resources Department, and everyone is aware of the focus that Water Resources has had for years, but especially recently, and has really emerged as a leader, there he is, Dan, in this area. And for the first time, our Team of the Year award was created to acknowledge the innovative and collaborative projects and coalitions happening right now in Cary that is best exemplified by our ACES team. These employees are dedicated to building community resilience by reducing the effects of significant adversity on children's healthy development. This team is comprised of two Cary Police Department employees, detectives Armando Bake and Elizabeth Pearson, along with two Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources employees, Rachel Baransky, performing arts education specialist, and Sam Trogdon, senior operations and program supervisor. Our winners are truly dedicated employees who embody the adaptive traits of our one Cary culture. To all of you, please accept these plaques. They're heavy, too. Betsy, here's yours. Dan, yours. And I'm assuming we've got, they've all have their own, but Rachel.
Your hands were out.
If we could give them a round of applause. Rachel, you don't want to say anything? You don't have to. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, and you truly are the best of the best. I, at the employees' luncheon, I stated that, you know, as mayor, I'm the front line for complaints, and I get far more kudos than I do complaints about our staff. And that's very unusual for a mayor, and Mr. Steigl will back me up on that.
Oh, yeah.
So thank you for being the best of the best, and all you do to keep our citizens happy and make this a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you. Okay, we move to our last presentation. It's on Fiscal Year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the CAFER. And I'm going to recognize Chief Financial Officer Karen Mills to the podium for the presentation.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we're here to officially present the 2018 Comprehensive Financial Report. As you mentioned, we fondly call it the CAFER. I'll begin briefly with some updates about the report content, touch on the town's financial results, and transition to the audit process before I introduce our audit partner to provide her perspective on the process and report. The CAFER title begins with a description comprehensive, because the report contains much more than just the town's basic financial statements. For example, there are dozens of tables with long-term trends and details in the statistical section of the report. This year, we enhanced the introductory section by adding an overview that highlights the town's financial results in terms that were designed to meet your needs rather than those prescribed by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. We included a description of how town finances are administered through special focus areas such as cash, debt, and risk management. And the overview includes summaries of the year's most important accomplishments, stories about how we invested our citizens' dollars to meet council and the community's highest priorities, and to work towards the implementation of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. Another change in the traditional financial, is in the traditional financial statements. In FY 2018, all governments were required to change where we report our obligations for future retiree health care, known as other post-employment benefits, or OPEB for short. The CAFER provides financial summaries of our priorities by showing where we invested in the community. Operational expenditures town-wide increased to $226 million. Part of that increase was for technology initiatives that were designed to streamline and enhance how we deliver citizen services, and these investments will help minimize cost increases in the future. We spent over $81 million this year on capital projects, and that included the completion of the Crabtree Creek Greenway, the Green Level West widening, and the connections provided by the Morrisville Parkway Extension. The CAFER also shows how we paid for those investments. Some of our capital projects were financed by a debt sale that occurred in FY 2018. We issued $31 million worth of new debt for the general fund to build streets, parks, and fire stations. And at the same time, we borrowed money, you may recall, we refinanced some of our existing debt to save our citizens over $10 million in interest expense over the next 11 years. Some of our capital projects were paid for with fund balance. For example, in FY 2018, we set aside resources for the downtown parking deck, and the results of our partnership with Wake County show every day as that site develops next to the downtown park. In all, we budgeted to draw on our savings and fund balance $31 million to pay for capital projects. But because the general fund had a net positive result of almost $18 million, fund balance only decreased $13 million. That $18 million came from a $4 million positive variance in revenues over budget and a $14 million in expenditures under budget. Likewise, on the utility fund side, we had planned to invest a net of $33 million worth of resources, but because of a positive outcome that was $7 million better than budget, our utility resources only decreased $26 million. In this chart of revenues and expenditures, you can see the outcome of years of planning that is generating operating income to help fund the capital maintenance of our water and sewer infrastructure. The FY 2018 CAFER informs our future and shows us that we're in a good financial position going forward. It shows us that there is debt capacity and fund balance resources to help fund future investments in both the general fund and the utility fund. We will use all this data to analyze strategic options for the town's financial future. Along with an in-depth review of our capital planning, we will ensure that the town is prepared to meet our financial obligations, to maintain our infrastructure, meet our debt obligations, and other long-term commitments that we've made. We'll also maintain our quarterly focus to build strength in our financial analysis. And in planning for the financial future, maintaining the town's top bond ratings is always a high priority. As expected, the auditor's report provided a clean opinion, and the auditors did not issue a management letter. That means that town staff throughout the organization performed quality work in managing financial transactions throughout the year and in preparation of this report. The staff have been challenged this year to grow to prepare these new quarterly statements, implement new accounting standards, and expand this report while adapting to positive changes throughout the organization. I'm extremely proud of the work of all of our financial experts, but Seth Larson and Judy Donartis deserve special recognition for their accomplishments to prepare this report. So now I would like to introduce April Adams, our audit partner at Cherry Becker, to share her perspective and make some required statements about the audit process, their opinions on the financial statements, and I'll be happy to answer questions after her presentation.
So, good evening. I'm happy to be here to share the results of the June 30, 2018 financial audit. As your auditors were required to conduct your audit in accordance with two sets of auditing standards. The first is the generally accepted auditing standards of the United States, as well as the government auditing standards. Those standards require us to plan and perform your audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. What this means is that we perform a risk-based audit. We use professional judgment as to where the risk of material misstatement may exist in your financial statements, which also means that we did not test every single transaction that occurred throughout the year. We're required to express opinions as a result of our audit. For the town, we expressed four opinions this year. The first opinion is on the financial statements themselves. The second is, covers the internal control environment over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations. And then the last two are related to your federal and state granting, grant funding that the town administers. I'm pleased to report that we issued what we call unmodified opinions, which is also known, commonly known as clean opinions. This is the highest level of assurance that we can give you, that your financial statements are free from material misstatement and in compliance with the laws and regulations that we test for. The auditing standards also require us to communicate certain things to you as a result of the audit. We do that in two ways. One is the presentation tonight, as well as a two-page letter that you received in your staff report. A few of the things that are in that letter that I want to highlight for you tonight are, one, that we confirm that as your auditors, we were independent and maintained our independence throughout the audit engagement. The letter points out that there was one significant change in your policies during the year, and that was the implementation of GASP-75. So again, I'm going to use that long term of other post-employment benefits, but that's related to those. And so now the town was required to record the full liability, and so they've done that through a prior period adjustment to the net position in the government-wide statements, which is bringing on that full liability to the statement of net position. I would like to comment that any government in the United States that has other post-employment benefits had to post similar entries relative to their plan, so you're not alone in the pain. The letter also identifies the significant amount of estimates that exist in your financial statement, which include your allowance for doubtful accounts, your appreciation of your capital assets, your pension liabilities, and your OPEB liability, as well as claims related to being self-insured. Finally, that letter also would identify if any journal entries were identified as a result of the audit. I'm happy to report in that letter that no journal entries were identified, which means that the books and records that the town provided us to audit ended up resulting in your financial statements. So that means that the town is, the county department is properly capturing all transactions that occurred throughout the year. I would like to take this moment to thank Karen Mills and her team for the tremendous amount of work that goes into the audit. We're relentless with our requests, and so they make the process as smooth and as efficient as possible, making sure that we get everything that we request in a timely fashion. So I just want to say thank you for that. That's it.
We are here to answer any questions, if you have any questions for us about the statements or the process.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for the audit report, and especially thank you, Karen, for you and your staff for all of the great work you guys do year-round, every day. And I love hearing the highlights like, "We just saved taxpayers $10 million over the next few years." You can keep saying that over and over and over. Thank you so much.
It's fun for us, too.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to our next portion of the meeting. Public Speaks Out. Our next agenda item, we've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda, and if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that will work to your advantage because you get more time when you speak at the public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium, and when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the yellow light turns to a flashing red light, that's when I'll interrupt you, again, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair, and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. To help have an effective, efficient Public Speaks Out item, we ask that groups have a spokesperson to speak on behalf of all the people, to reduce repetitive comments. Also, if you'd like to speak next, after the person that is currently speaking, I'd ask that you take a place over there in the stairway, ready to be the next one in line, and that will help us be more efficient and allow me to know that there are other speakers coming. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. I ask that you do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that might distract from the meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker to the podium. Anyone to speak at Public Speaks Out?
on the southern tip of the Carpenter National Register Historic District. The partial is five and a half acres, currently an open field in the historic crossroads area located on the eastern side of Carpenter Upchurch Road next to a historic home. To guide our design, we consulted with town staff and applied policies in Cary's 2040 Community Plan. These include: Protect and conserve historic properties and places, specifically in Carpenter associated with the National Register Historic District, and historic assets identified in Cary's Historic Resources Inventory. Number two, encourage compatible infill development and uses within the Carpenter crossroads areas. Contextually compatible infill development within the historic crossroads areas could enhance the vitality of this destination and support regional tourism and economic development. Number three, design new neighborhoods in the southern section of the special planning area to complement the historic context. New residential development south of the realignment of Morrisville Carpenter Road should support the historic character of the area, be compatible with, and blend into the landscape. New residential development proximate to the crossroads area should employ compatible mass, scale, and density, and use landscape and architectural elements that create a transition to the crossroads. Number four, use roadway and streetscape designs that reinforce the historic character of Carpenter. The design of key roadways and their streetscape should complement and be compatible with historic character of Carpenter. The intent of this policy states that Carpenter Upchurch Road should remain in its current condition. As you can see in the documents provided, we have worked diligently to design a solution which addresses the policy intent of the SPA. This area adjacent to the historic buildings mimics the feel of an old town street and provides a place for home-based businesses to thrive and small businesses to face Carpenter Upchurch Road. These units have a storefront with living space behind and above. Other dwellings embrace regional farmhouse structure, and garages mimic barn forms. That being said, we are... our hands are tied because we are not able to request MXD zoning in the special planning area. For us to develop according to the policies of the SPA, we ask the council to consider and encourage staff to draft ordinance amendments which allow mixed-use district zoning in special planning areas. This would allow innovative design and flexibility related to buffers, building setbacks, and dimensional standards. We're also aware of the stricter road regulations being implemented, and the MXD option would enable us to use... propose a hybrid road system with both pub... public and private streets. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Neelum Razor, and I'm here to support case 18REZ22, the Green Level Cary West office. I've been a resident of Cary for 22 years and seen my children grow up here. You know, they've been around the parks and enjoyed all the facilities. We've participated in all the activities around town. I've seen the town grow and understand the concern, you know, the town has with the growth of traffic congestion and other growth in surrounding areas. And I understand that we don't want sprawl growth. We need to have, you know, not having all kinds of shopping centers coming up, but we do want some smart growth, and we want to see support small local companies like Net32, which is trying to set up an office in that Green Level Offi... Green Level Cary West office area. So I'm here to support that and support the zoning for that so that the company... small local companies can be able to develop and set up in the area. So would like to see that get supported and be able to come up to the zoning into Cary's agenda and help us set up a nice office in the surrounding area without, you know, bringing growth into the area, which is going to be a sprawl and a smart growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out?
My name is Audrey Hale, and I'm here representing the Traffic Calming Committee for the Reserve Neighborhood, and we are asking for your support and approval of Traffic Circles, which is on the consent agenda. When I moved onto Edgemore Avenue, I immediately became concerned with the amount of traffic and speed of the drivers. After speaking with neighbors who were also concerned, I learned that there had been previous attempts to install traffic calming measures, but they were unsuccessful. I went ahead and requested the paperwork for a traffic study to be completed, once I had learned it had been many years since the previous study. As you saw on the staff report, there is significant speeding problem with approximately 189 cars per day driving on Edgemore 34 miles per hour, which in a 25 mile per hour zone. Edgemore is a neighborhood street with sidewalks on one side. We have a lot of pedestrian traffic from the Greenway, middle and high school bus stops, as well as a walks... mandatory walk zone for Highcroft Elementary. Once I learned that our HOA was not able to assist the neighborhood in funding the traffic circles per the bylaws, I was ready to give up. Then I had overwhelming support from neighbors who asked me to keep going. We scheduled a meeting, and that is when we formed the Traffic Calming Committee. I still didn't know if we were going to be able to reach the goal of the requirements of the town to get 70% signatures for the petition and raise 25% of the funds, approximately $20,000. With help from many volunteers, we reached both of these goals with overwhelming support from people who live on Edgemore. Thirty-seven out of 37 homes on Edgemore in the affected area, 31 signed for the petition. But we received support from all over our neighborhood. We have neighbors who have lived here for 20-plus years who have been trying to tackle the speeding problem, and we have brand-new neighbors who are equally happy for help to slow down traffic. Of course, there are a few people who are against the traffic circles. One gentleman would prefer a police officer monitor our streets on a regular basis. Others find it inconvenient. Most of these people live in a cul-de-sac and do not have the same experience driving and walking on Edgemore. To raise the money, we ran a successful GoFundMe campaign where we received 112 donations from individuals. Most of these donations came from neighbors in the reserve, but even a few people in the adjoining neighborhood contributed, as well as grandparents whose grandchildren live in our neighborhood. I was truly blown away by the support from my neighbors. It was amazing to see our community come together to make our neighborhood safer. We are looking forward to your approval and the installation of the trackers... traffic circles to slow the speeding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any Public Speaks Out speakers left? Anyone else? Last call. Seeing no one, I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'd like to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have: Minutes. Calendar year 2019 meeting schedule. 2019 through 2020 legislative agenda. Act 7 Land Development Ordinance Amendments. Correction to Procurement Policy Statement 180. Bid Award for DIP Sewer Replacement Projects. Bid Award for Greenhope School Road Reclaim Waterline Extension. White Oak Creek Greenway Construction Bid Award. MacArthur Section. Traffic Calming, the Reserve Subdivision. Condemnation Resolutions to Secure Necessary Easements for the Reedy Creek Road Widening Project. Update on Maintenance and Bankruptcy Proceedings. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that takes us to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes for your comments, you now have five minutes for your comments. Our first public hearing is 18REZ18, Veterinary Specialty Hospital Expansion. Principal Planner Scott Ramage will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and it will come back to us at a later date for our decision. Mr. Ramage.
All right, good evening. This case is a rezoning request by Cary Veterinary Specialty Hospital for a 4.09 acre site on Tryon Road for the purpose of expanding their site onto an adjacent parcel. The expansion is intended to provide additional parking and the potential for a building expansion on the existing site. The site is on the south side of Tryon Road, opposite Wellington Park Shopping Center. Immediately south is Lockmere Village, and immediately to the west are the Tryon Place The rezoning request includes all of the existing property owned by the veterinary hospital at 6405 Tryon Road, and that's shaded magenta on the slide. The rezoning request also affects a portion of the adjacent property owned by John Coon, shaded blue on the slide. The vet hospital intends to purchase a portion of the Coon property to support future expansion. Only the portion inside the yellow boundary is included in tonight's rezoning request. Part of the reason for the odd shape of that expansion area is because the Coon property already includes an area having a long-term cell tower lease, and the vet hospital has to work around the cell tower lease in order to acquire the amount of land they need for expansion. The existing veterinary hospital is currently zoned office and institutional, and the existing vet hospital is allowed by right. The portion of the site that's on the new property is currently zoned R40, residential 40. The site is also located within a mixed-use overlay district and within the Swift Creek Watershed Protection Overlay District. However, no changes to those districts are being proposed. The applicants are requesting that the entire new combined site be zoned office and institutional conditional use, and there are six proposed zoning conditions. The applicant's first condition concerns allowed uses. This is a list of key uses permitted in the ONI district by right or as a special use. Among all those uses, the applicant's proposed to only allow veterinary hospital or office with indoor kennel and business or professional office. The next condition prohibits trash and recycling pickup at nighttime between the hours of midnight and 7:00 a.m. There is also a condition that if a stormwater control measure on the site is designed so that it has a constant pool of water, then it will be fenced as a safety measure. And exterior lighting will be limited to a maximum height of 30 feet. The next condition stipulates that the new area that will be added to the site will only be used for parking, so that's the brown shaded area you see on the slide. And lastly, there's a condition that prohibits land disturbance of any sort within the stream buffer and within the perimeter buffer next to Lockmere Village. The only exceptions allowed by... in this condition are for non-electric utilities or for a stormwater outfall. Staff has prepared a preliminary evaluation of the applicant's conformance with applicable policies in the Imagencary Community Plan. Staff feels that the proposal conforms to work policies that encourage the growth of local businesses and that recognize that different types of businesses require different kinds of locations and settings. The request could also be consistent with shape policies that encourage infill, as well as expanding the mix of uses around shopping centers such as Wellington. According to the Future Growth Framework Map in Imagencary, most of the site is part of an area designated as commercial center with a small portion designated as traditional neighborhood. Professional office uses are appropriate in commercial centers. The plan also indicates that limited amounts of neighborhood-scale office may be appropriate at the edges of traditional neighborhoods. There is a stream that runs along the southern property boundary. We'd also like to note that the town will be conducting some drainage improvements in the vicinity of Vinecrest Court to help address some existing upstream issues that are unrelated to this site. There are no new parks or greenways recommended within or adjacent to the site. A proposed future street-side trail is planned along southeast Cary Parkway, about 600 feet west of the site. The community plan's Move Chapter designates Tryon Road as a four-lane thoroughfare, and it's already been built to its ultimate cross-section. The site is currently served by Go Triangle Route 305, which travels along Tryon Road. In the long term, a future Go Cary route is planned on southeast Cary Parkway adjacent to the shopping center. Notification of tonight's hearing was mailed to all properties within 800 feet of the site, and the property was posted. The applicant conducted the required neighborhood meeting on August 1st with 10 neighbors in attendance. At that meeting, residents expressed concerns about landscape buffers adjacent to Lockmere Village, stormwater runoff and management, and noise from dumpster garbage collection. The applicants then held a second neighborhood meeting on September 6th to continue the discussion with the neighbors and develop new zoning conditions to address their concerns. As a result, the proposal went from one condition to six. We've also received several calls since the hearing notices were mailed a couple weeks ago. Those comments concern traffic cutting through the adjacent Tryon Place Apartments and requests just for general information about the rezoning and questions about the expansion plans for the hospital. And this concludes our presentation. The applicant's representative, Jason Earlywine of Withers and Ravenel, is here to offer his remarks prior to opening the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ramage. At this time, I invite the applicant's representative forward to present your comments.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Council. My name's Jason Earlywine. I'm with Withers Ravenel, and I am representing the property owners. Scott pretty much covered everything that we needed to discuss as far as the technical aspects of the case. I just wanted to point out a few facts. Basically, the reason for our rezoning tonight, for our request, is that the owners would like to expand the... or not expand, reconfigure the interior of the existing building. They have zero plans to expand the building itself. With this reconfiguration of the building, they're planning on adding additional staff, veterinarians. With this addition of staff, they're expecting an increase in volume for their patients. And so the parking will become necessary to accommodate this growth. They've already spoken with a neighbor about acquiring a piece of the property, as Scott showed you all. The expansion of the property itself will only be used for parking. There will be, again, no building expansion at all. We did meet with neighbors on two separate occasions, and we believe that... We did meet with neighbors on two separate occasions, and we believe that between the neighbors and the extensive communication we've had with staff here, specifically Rob Wilson and I have been talking a lot. We've become very good friends through this process. We think that we've come up with some conditions that will mutually satisfy the neighbors and the property owners themselves. I think that's about all that we really had to point out. Again, if you had any questions, we did just want to make sure that everyone understood that we are not expanding the building. We're just looking for additional parking for hopefully more use for the veterinary hospital when they expand their staff and gain more clients. So the property owners are here tonight in case there are any questions for them specifically, but I'm here to answer any other questions you all might have.
We'll, we may ask you questions after the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time for the public hearing for 18 REZ 18 Veterinary Specialty Hospital Expansion, and I would invite our first speaker forward. I thought they were coming down. They left.
We'll follow her.
Good evening. My name's Brooke Strickler. I live at 104 Vinecrest Court, which is in Lockmere Village and is behind the location where the vet has proposed the expansion. I've passed around some hard copy comments and questions. I won't read through this verbatim. I know time is limited, but I just did want to highlight some concerns that I have and some of the other residents of Lockmere Village share. And first of all, I appreciate the opportunity from the Town of Cary to provide a public forum and opportunity to provide input, as well as the developers here reaching out. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the previous meetings, so. In summary, the concerns from me as a resident in Lockmere Village, as well as my wife, are stormwater is one area. We have flooding in Vinecrest Court. It's been happening for years. So I know that this is unrelated, but this will exacerbate the flooding issue. There's a plan by the Town of Cary to fix the issue. Hasn't happened yet, so just logically, I would fix the existing problem before you exacerbate and create a new problem, because all the water's going to the same place. And just to add to that, as many of you may have had to live through this year, a lot of the flooding plans have been exceeded with 100-year, 500-year floods, so that may be something that the town needs to look at holistically with the hurricanes and the increase with what we've seen in the past year. Second thing I would say would be light pollution. The location of this parking is at a much higher elevation. I know they've inserted a condition of 30-foot tall lights. If you add the 30 feet to the 20-some feet elevation, that's 50 feet above our property, so that's a significant concern, so I have some questions whether those lights can be eliminated. Other comments are just the practical aspect of, I'm not really clear why a vet needs 130 parking spaces. That just seems very high to me, so I would challenge the owners whether they've looked at other practical things to reduce the parking. Included in that is, there's a lot of studies out there right now that says parking space is going to be reduced 50% by Uber autonomous cars, what have you. Maybe that'll happen, maybe it won't, but something to consider. And then I guess the last thing is, as far as the landscape buffer, I'd ask that the town look at that and to beef that up if the parking ultimately is expanded. Right now, this time of year, the woods are extremely thin, and so. Anyway, in summary, runoff, lighting issues, and just the practical nature of if the building is not expanding, which we just heard, do you really need 60 more parking spots? It just seems a little excessive for a vet to have 130 parking spots, so. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Strickler. Next speaker, please.
Counsel, I will admit it's my very first meeting, but I just can't not introduce myself and chat. I live adjacent to the--
Could you give us your name for the--
Sorry, my name is Rob Bissett.
Thank you.
I live on Marvesta Court, so adjacent to the hospital. And I will say, in principle, I want to support, you know, the entrepreneurial spirit and sort of expansion. I'm a customer of the veterinary hospital, so, you know, good neighbors from that regard. My dog welcomes them to work every morning. That being said, as the previous speaker indicated, there is a river, a creek, a raging torrent from time to time that runs along that property, and at its, I guess, southwestern most point, it meanders between my property and the veterinary hospital, and it is starting to become a problem. There's a retaining wall there that substantially supports my house. My number-one concern with the expansion of the hardtop surface is any increase to that water will cause an erosion problem for my property, just because of elevation differences. So I definitely would support the expansion, you know, with reasonable conditions around that. Certainly, they've been engaging. We see the six amendments are all definitely as a result of feedback that the neighbors have provided. But for me personally, the biggest concern that I have would be any expansion to that river. Certainly would cause highly detrimental impacts, specifically to my property and potentially to my house. So that remains the biggest concern. Again, to echo the previous speaker, obviously, the forest is thin at this point, so light pollution is a problem, you know, shielding, height, those kinds of things, you know, concerns around that. Noise is a problem. We see the part of the garbage removal clause there. That, for me, is very important. Again, it's often a 5:00 AM wake-up call, so we definitely appreciate that being added. But again, that notion of the water management is an issue there already within the cul-de-sac and on my property, and any increase in water runoff would be hugely detrimental. So I would ask council to consider that when looking at this offering. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Anyone else? And he's already spoke. Anyone else for this public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I want to try to address some of these and ask questions about other things that were brought up. Stormwater is a nationwide problem. Cary has stormwater issues, especially from homes built before 2000. A lot of those were platted in floodplains. The floodplain is determined by the federal government? I'm looking at Scott.
Correct.
I'm looking at Sean. I'm looking at--
Yes.
Yes, okay. Because they send out a report every now and then.
Right.
And we adjust based on those reports, am I?
Correct. In this case, our floodplain extends a little further up, so we kind of identify those stream buffers as areas that'll flood as well. But FEMA has a floodplain that starts at 1 square mile.
Right.
Yep.
And the slide you showed with the homes and the creek, the creek area ran right through, like three or four of them, that were in the creek bed or however you want to put it?
That's correct. All those lots are platted prior to our stream buffer rules. So the discussion we had a few weeks ago, this is the exact type of situation.
So the point I'm getting at is we have this problem all over town, for one, and it's a massive, expensive problem that will not be solved this year, next year, or the next several years. However, we will be working on this problem as time goes on. In the meantime, we require developers to handle stormwater, any stormwater they create. Am I correct?
You are correct, sir. Water quality and water quantity.
Do they handle more than they create in this instance?
In this instance, there is no condition given rather than our rules as-is.
Okay.
And our rules are a 10-year--
10-year.
We require the 1, 2, 5, and 10-year storm to be mitigated. The state requires 1 year.
So the problem is trying to convince somebody of that, that lives in a flood area that floods all the time, that you're going to have more impervious service, yet it's going to be as good or better. That's the difficult conversation to have, that they don't believe you, don't care what you say, but that's what's going to happen.
You're correct. I mean, there's no disputing that, no ambiguity whatsoever there.
But that's a conversation I want the residents to continue to have with the developer and with staff. They can provide you all the data and information specific to your property, talk to you about that, talk to you about future plans, et cetera, to help with these concerns. Not that you'll be satisfied, but to give you all the information that you need related to this issue. That was all I had about stormwater. I'm sure my colleagues probably have more. Light pollution, is there a condition or a requirement to have the light going straight down rather than this? Of course, this is 50 feet up. Some residents said, I don't know if that's accurate, but 50 feet up on elevation, and talk to me about the light there.
Okay. The town has, our ordinances, direct lighting has to be down-directed. So we also have limits on how many foot candles of illumination can occur at the property line. So the town's light regulations are fairly strict. The 30-foot height that they've given as a condition for the maximum height of, say, a parking lot light fixture is one thing. The neighbor was also accurate that that square, little corner you see that's being added, water and slope is flowing gently to the west-southwest. And so that upper corner, as you get into the new property, from what we've seen on topographic maps, right now it's at an elevation that is about 20 feet higher than the middle part of the parking lot on that site, because it's going uphill. But we don't have any grading plan from the applicant. They haven't submitted a site plan for review where we really have an idea of how they're going to grade it. They could, you know, we'll have to wait and see how they wish to address that. After tonight's, if that's a citizen concern, they may wish to entertain how they wish to respond to that.
So now I'm going to go down a little bit in the weeds, which I really hate to do, but I kind of want to go there just to ask this question. If we're on level and the light's going down, you can convince me that there's not going to be any light bleed over. However, if it's elevated however many feet, even though it's directed down, is there going to be bleed over? Just curious.
And that's probably a very difficult question to answer without a plan in front of us.
Okay.
Generally, the lots are going, each lot as you head west is getting to a lower elevation, just like on the veterinary site, as you move down their parking lot and head towards the apartments, it's also going downhill. So a light fixture at the north end of their site is going to be starting at a higher base than a lot, several lots down. So, but there's also a buffer there. There's a 30, when they built in 2001, the vet site was originally built in '01, at that time, they were required to have a 30-foot type-A buffer.
Type-A is opaque. Go ahead.
Right. And as a, there's a stream buffer that extends partly beyond that in many places. It'll push that out to a 40- and 50-foot buffer. So those trees can't be taken down. Whatever has grown up since 2001 would stay there, so the unknown right now, without, again, seeing a site plan, is hopefully some of the vegetation is going to block some of the off-site light impacts as well. And what type of fixture they elect to use? As you know, in Town Hall, some places, we just use bollard lighting. They have a condition, they won't go higher than 60, but it's also possible they could submit a site plan with something less than, and until we get a site plan, we won't really know.
So to follow up on that, if it meets our requirements for an opaque buffer, we really, it meets our requirements. We can't require more than that. There were a couple of comments, they beef up the buffer.
It's opaque.
It's opaque by our standards, so we cannot require any more.
Well, and in fact, if they, the new areas, today, we would have required a 40-foot buffer, 10 more feet. So if they do a parking lot expansion, and as you saw from the aerial, they have some undeveloped land at the northern corner of their site up here, too. But if they expand parking back here, they will also have to refit their 30-foot and expand it to meet the full 40 feet. So there may be additional plantings in places where, right now, they have 30, it could grow to 40.
Okay. I'm getting close to the end.
Oh, and Mayor, I did want to also, was reminded by Rob Wilson, just to clarify, that we don't have, there's no zoning condition that says the building won't be expanded. We just wanted to clarify. I know the applicant said there is no intention on the part of the owners to expand, but--
And that's not a condition, right?
It's not a condition.
Right. So they could expand the building.
Right.
So we have to take it at the worst-case scenario, unless it's a condition.
Can we stay on that one, monit, rather than bouncing?
Okay.
So there's, this is a rezoning for an expansion. The applicant has said, we're not going to expand, we're going to build a parking lot, but there's no condition in here that it's only a parking lot.
There's a condition, it's a parking lot.
No, there's no--
Correct.
That's a number five, condition number five.
Let me bring that slide back up.
There's no zoning condition. Did I miss something?
Yeah. Condition five.
So the zoning condition says that in the new property they wish to acquire, that's shaded brown, that area will only be used for parking. You can't put any buildings there.
Oh, but for the overall--
But on the part of the property they've owned since 2001, that's zoned straight O&amp;I today, and today by right, if they could somehow figure out how to do an addition and still park it, they would be free to do that as long as they meet town ordinances.
Right.
So as they are now proposing O&amp;I CU for the entire site, they have gone back to add any condition that, you know, would say cap total floor space on their old existing site or anything. It's, they've left that the same way it is today, O&amp;I zoning with the size of the building not addressed.
And the extra--
But it could be done if they were.
And the extra, and that includes both of those greenish areas? Both have that similar condition or only for the one? Because you know how it bleeds over to the west, or on this western, you see where it says additional area and then has another additional area?
Right.
Is that condition applied to both of those?
Right.
So there's parking in both of those sections?
Right. And you can kind of see, they have a road stub here right now.
Right, that's why I was asking.
So I'm, my supposition, and based on the discussion we had with the applicants last spring, they're trying to figure out how to turn that road, you know, to kind of bring the parking lot in a circle probably around the building. But again, we don't have a formally submitted site plan. But yeah, all, everything you see shaded in brown by condition can only be parking lot.
Just for that part. Okay, thank you.
Parking lot, or of course, trees or grass or vegetation.
Right, right.
And there would be, the entire area, this northern site is still within the overlay district. There's no buffer required to the north or even to this side, but once you get within, at the edge of, say, these lots here, then at that edge, there is a buffer against all of Lockmere Village.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
So, yeah, while you have that slide up, to the additional area that looks like a square, to the, bub there, there's so much space, only a finite space there. Is that enough for a road to go through? My point is, to the east of there, we're not really landlocking them, are we?
On this side of the property?
Yes.
And that's something staff has talked about. The slopes get much more steep when we pull up the topo maps. This is a steeper spot, so the area they're looking at, they have indicated they didn't need any more than this for what they're anticipating their future parking needs to be, but the remaining part of Mr. Kuhn's property, he, of course, has this undeveloped piece up here by Tryon Road, and then a little neck, and then the balance back here. And that's going to stay zoned R40. And, you know, so theoretically, he could subdivide off an R40 lot, you know, build a house or something like that. But it's, we really haven't engaged the property owner in discussion about, you know, what his future financial plans may be for the balance of the property. Presumably, they're going in eyes wide open on what they, what the owner wants to do with the balance of the property.
So my last question, which the citizen brought up, that I thought was a good one, 130 parking spaces for a veterinarian hospital? Help me.
Yes.
I don't understand that at all, so.
And it's-- And it's, that's not, what they have today, so on the existing vet site, we looked this up, they currently have 74 parking spaces. Ordinance says they needed 79. When they came in in 2001, they said, and the planning director can give up to like a 10% reduction at that time in '01, they did 74 instead of 79. At the administrative level, five spaces were taken off the total. But there's also a maximum. So we hit the 79 units. At the administrative level, that is at the staff level with director approval, there's a cap that you can't approve more than a 30% overage. After that, it has to go to council. So we calculated that and said, with a 30% overage, if they do not change the building at all, so it's the same floor space with no building addition, they would be stopped at 102 spaces at the staff level. To get any more than 102 parking spaces, they'd need to come to town council.
Okay. I appreciate my colleagues bearing with me on those questions. I'll open it up.
Now, if there was a building addition, then the ratio would match it up a little more.
Other questions?
I'll just go back to the storm water. So help us understand a little bit. So our standard is to a 10-year storm. So if we get a 50-year storm or 100-year storm, the stormwater device would be overwhelmed by that. It would not be able to retain the water from that, and it would overflow. Is that correct?
Actually, it'd probably still go through the device. There would be some mitigation, but we don't require it to be to pre-development conditions.
Okay. So is that a yes?
It's a yes.
Yeah, yes.
That's a yes. Okay. So how, how difficult is it to go and build to a higher storm standard? Because I know over in my district, we've had some subdivisions that have done that because they were concerned about the flooding in the nearby creeks.
In this case, the developer could, with the space that they have available, could probably easily do that.
Okay. So that's something that the residents would want to talk to the developer about, about having them attenuate to a higher storm than a 10-year storm.
And we can't require that.
We don't require it at all, but that's an option for them to talk to the developer about. What could they accommodate in that space? Like you said, that they could probably enlarge to attenuate to a higher-level storm. Could they do 100-year storm?
They certainly could. Absolutely.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
On, just sticking with storm water for a minute. Earlier, when you were presenting, you said that you're already working, I think it's on Mar Vista Court, and something's already in the works. What's in the works, and when does that happen? But it was unrelated to this, it's happening at the same.
On Vinecrest Court. So some of the drainage from Piney Plains is overwhelming the system on Vinecrest. So Vinecrest floods during certain storm events. We are upgrading the infrastructure to accommodate that. The design is complete, and it's going to construction in fall of 19.
So, does that help the situation?
That will fix the flooding on Vinecrest Court. Yes.
And this development, then, if they do their mitigation, can't make it worse?
Correct.
That's just what I'm trying to clear up.
Correct.
You know, I think it's good that they get it upgraded, so it's kind of consistent with what we're doing, and then it just helps the whole area. I mean, the, you know, the area has had a lot of, you know.
I'll summarize it. Yeah, Vinecrest Court is going to be fixed next year, that flooding. This development was built, the vet hospital was built prior to our stormwater rules. So that's another example of them. They didn't have mitigation back then either. So they've got an opportunity to over-treat, so they can mitigate this whole concern in one fell swoop.
Back on that, so if they were before, you're saying there's, they have zero mitigation, they had, they had no requirement to mitigate at all?
Correct.
Do you, are you aware that they did any mitigation at all?
They had a bioretention area, but that was there for water quality. It was prior to our peak flow mitigation rules. So there was, there's been no analysis of that, but it was done for water quality only.
So this parking lot can just overflow over the curb and run into the creek, basically?
The existing one.
Existing one, yes.
It is routed to a bioretention area, so there is water quality treatment. As a result, there's, there's some peak flow mitigation, but that was not one of the considerations in the design.
Okay.
Other questions?
I did have an observation.
Please.
And it's, I know it's anecdotal, but I pulled up Google Earth, and I don't know what time of day the picture was taken, but there are six available parking spaces, and there are eight cars parked along the curb. So they are overparked, I mean, I guess it's called underparked. There are too many cars for the spaces there, just in the picture on Google Earth. So I see that there's a need for people. I guess it's, you know, and it's just clear to me that it's, the parking places are full. It's not, they're not asking for something, it seems to me, a chance. Just observation.
Other comments?
Just a question about the lighting. There's no lighting there now, is that right? Are there no light poles there now?
Oh, in the existing parking lot? I would presume it is lit today for safety.
So I'm curious if the new lighting is different than what's there now? Is it the same? I'm just trying to understand what's, what's on the ground now, what's being proposed, and how different that is.
There is lighting currently. We actually had one of our engineers go out and measure the height. None of the lighting is above 30 feet, and that's why we came up with that condition, to keep all lighting under 30 feet, so that what we're adding for the additional parking area won't really change what the existing condition is for lighting.
Okay. So you're just, the way I see it is, you're, you're just adding additional lighting for those new parking.
For the additional parking area.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we don't have a site plan yet. We do, you know, we had a concept, you know, we're not required to have a site plan at this stage. So of course, we have a concept, we've been working, you know, with some ideas, but we also have to now build in the conditions. There already was plans for stormwater mitigation. So everything that, again, I think that the concerns that citizens were having, the neighbors were having, we tried to work with them to develop conditions that would keep the existing problems at a minimum or solve them completely. That was our plan anyway, our goal.
I know this is still going to P and Z, but part of the reason I believe you come to us, besides us hearing what citizens say, is to hear our feedback. And I have to say, putting in a parking lot is going, and along with the stormwater enhancements that are being done by the town, if you hadn't put the parking lot, or proposed the parking lot, you wouldn't be fixing some of the water mitigation or.
Correct.
mitigation issues, stormwater mitigation issues. So it is a great opportunity. I hope you will consider surpassing our requirements. I hope you will take that into consideration.
Definitely. I mean, that's certainly up to the developer, but again, we already had planned on, I mean, it's required that we have stormwater. And to be honest, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not sure what the minimum standards are, but, you know, as we start to develop a site plan and go through that, the neighbors have been very, very engaged with us. We've had a lot of communication. They've been very open to our ideas, and I believe we've been open to theirs. So I think there will be more communication when we move into the site plan process. And hopefully, as I said earlier, everyone will be in agreement so that we have happy neighbors and a happy vet clinic, so.
Happy dogs.
Yeah, happy dogs.
Other comments?
Well, I think that, I heard from some, when it was first being tagged and trees were being marked and everything, and, you know, I've been getting feedback on who's attended meetings. I don't recall the names. I don't know if the two that were here tonight were part of those meetings or not. But, you know, some of the information that they shared has already been addressed, and that doesn't mean the rest hasn't. But, you know, there's always that concern, because we can't deal with the site plan at this time. So the most that you can address and continue to communicate with, with my neighbors, that's very helpful, and that just puts more, more at ease. And, you know, I think the lighting, I don't think there will be that spillover, but of course, those big unknowns are the grading and the site plan. So the more that you can do, the more you can help with the stormwater. But I, I think it's important that the citizens heard tonight where we're going to be by 2019 on, on the other street next to Mar Vista. So things are happening to help protect that, you know, that community. Want you to be a good neighbor, and a lot of them probably do take their pets there, so.
Oh, yeah.
Just keep working on it. All right?
Definitely.
Other comments? Thank you. As was stated, this is going to go to our Planning and Zoning Board, which is a group of citizens that's been appointed by the council, and they're going to review this and give us their recommendation, citizens' point of view. And then it'll come back to us, and we'll make a decision at that point. In the meantime, it's to everybody's best interest if you continue to give feedback. Your feedback tonight was excellent, great points. Continue to, if you have any questions, please contact staff or us or the applicant or all, and continue to work the problem, and I think we come out with a win-win if that happens. And again, thank you for being here, and thank you for your feedback. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Sorry, I just wanted, Daniel is, since that we, we're the owners of the property, we just wanted to thank you all for your consideration, and very much appreciate our neighbors' comments and the opportunity to interact with them. And just two quick comments. One on the parking situation. It's a good observation. It's already stressed in terms of parking. It's more than a veterinary practice. This is really one of the world-class veterinary facilities in the country. It has a linear accelerator for radiation treatment for animals as well as an MRI on site.
You saved my pet's life. I've been there.
So it's unusual, so you got that. And the, in fact, the trash collection noise issue that was referenced was really a function of fact that it's so densely parked that it was hard for the trash collectors to get there other than early morning. So more parking will actually help continue to alleviate that issue. And then the only other thing that I just wanted to add is, we would absolutely be interested in considering additional mitigation with regard to stormwater. I think that it makes good sense for us to try and go beyond the 10-year requirement. We were talking briefly with our engineer from Withers and Ravenol and think that that's very possible, and we'll continue to interact with our neighbors on that issue. So thank you.
The last thing you said is very important. Continue to.
We will.
Continue to give them your feedback and what you can and can't do. I think that really helps.
Terrific. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We now move to our second public hearing. It's 18 REZ 23, which is 6,800 Holly Springs Road rezoning. And our senior planner, Katie Dry, will introduce the item. We will not take action on this item this evening, but we're going to be referring it to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, council. This is a request to rezone 2.03 acres at 6,800 Holly Springs Road. The property is about three-quarters of a mile south of the Tryon Road-Holly Springs-Walnut intersection. You can see Tryon Village up here to the north. And moving down Holly Springs Road, about 1,000 feet south of the southeast-Carry Parkway intersection is the site, which is located on the west side of Holly Springs Road. It's adjacent to the Camden Forest neighborhood. The site's improved with one existing house, a setback about 125 feet from the existing edge of road pavement for Holly Springs Road. And the current zoning is R40. The applicants are requesting to rezone the site to R20 conditional use. Due to the size of the property and the maximum number of lots that could be created, the North Carolina general statutes would allow this property to be subdivided without being subject to the town subdivision regulations, meaning that requirements for road improvements, streetscapes, buffers would not apply. The newly created properties, if rezoned, would be required to meet all dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. So the town staff would look to make sure minimum lot sizes were met, setbacks were met, things along those lines. The applicant has offered zoning conditions associated with this site, and some of them address some of the requirements of the town subdivision ordinances to kind of go above and beyond what they would typically be required to do. First, they're limiting the lot to a maximum of two detached dwellings. So this is just a hypothetical lot line. This line could shift to the north or to the south, but if the rezoning were approved, they could potentially put a maximum of two lots, so they'd be able to build one additional house on this property. They've also proposed some conditions to address some of the requirements of the town's ordinance, since the site would be exempt from subdivision regulations. They're proposing to dedicate right-of-way along Holly Springs Road. They're also proposing to increase the rear yard setback to 50 feet. The requirement of the R20 district is 20 feet. They're also proposing a 10-foot landscape area along the rear property line. Staff's completed a preliminary analysis of the site using the Imagine-Carry Community Plan. We found applicable policies come from the Live, Shape, and Move chapters. First, we note that the site is an infill site. It's adjacent to the Camden Forest subdivision, which is zoned R12. Many of the adjacent lots range between 15,000 to 19,000 square feet. To the north of the site, the site is next to a property that was recently rezoned to allow for two detached dwellings, and that's under construction currently. Continuing the infill trend that we're seeing along the stretch of Holly Springs Road, there was a recent rezoning application submitted to the north at the intersection of southeast-Carry Parkway for townhomes. When we look at the Shape chapter, the site's within the traditional neighborhood land use designation, which is generally described by having large master plan communities, and detached dwellings are the predominant land use. When we zoom out, we can see that the site is well within the traditional neighborhood category. The destination center associated with the crossroads area is to the north, once you get a little closer to Tryon Road. There do not appear to be any stream buffers within close proximity to the site. And according to the Park's recreational cultural facilities master plan, there are no parks or greenways which are immediately adjacent to the site. When we look at the transportation plan, Holly Springs Road is planned to be a six-lane median divided thoroughfare. And as noted before, the applicant has offered a zoning condition to dedicate right-of-way along Holly Springs Road, which is consistent with the road designation of a six-lane thoroughfare. Staff also notes that because the road is a major thoroughfare designation, safety would be improved if the applicant were to provide one shared access point to limit the number of individual curb cuts on the road. For the neighborhood meeting, as well as the public hearing tonight, properties within 800 feet of the site were notified. And the neighborhood meeting was held on October 3rd. There were nine nearby property enters in attendance. Some of the questions were regarding the widening of Holly Springs Road, concern over loss of trees, and I should note, many of these residents were from the adjacent Camden Forest neighborhood. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments, and following that and the public hearing, staff's available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. This time, I will invite the applicant board for their remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Dry and staff, for the fantastic work, and thank you, council, for letting me present and talk to you today. My name is Jamie Dawson. I'm a realtor and builder in Wake County. I purchased this property from a friend a few months ago. My plan is to subdivide the lot, as Katie said, into two lots. We, we want to preserve the home that's currently there. It was built in the early 1900s. And then either build or sell the additional lot. This area is in the traditional neighborhood designation for future growth, which supports detached dwellings, of course. In order for the subdivision to take place, we'll need to rezone the property from R40 to R20 CU, which the surrounding properties are R12 and R12 CU, and have had a neighborhood meeting and listened to the concerns of the neighbors. We took note of these concerns, and I believe our proposal addresses all concerns that were brought to the table at our first meeting to satisfy the concerns brought to our attention. We have added the following, which Ms. Dry told you, which is to dedicate the right-of-way consistent with the Move chapter of the Carry Community Plan. The use shall be limited to two detached dwellings. And then the neighbors were concerned with the setbacks, and they requested that, as the properties to the north that are being redeveloped right now and built on, they had given 50-foot setbacks from the rear property lines. And so we are okay with that. And also a 10-foot landscape area with disturbances only allowed by the LDO. Any plat that divides the subject property shall include these notes, so if it's sold Any plat that divides the subject property shall include these notes, so if it's sold or whatever, it will carry forward. And I believe that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson.
Thank you.
Now it's time for public hearing, 18 REZ 23, 6,800 Holly Springs Road rezoning. And I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Two comments. I heard there was a recommendation from the town that there's, for safety reasons, for DOT to have a shared driveway. Did I hear that?
Yes, because this road is designated as a six-lane median divided road in the future. For safety reasons, they could consider offering a zoning condition for one shared driveway. That would be something that would be voluntary and up to the applicant. We have shared that with them.
You've shared that with them, okay.
And they have not offered it to date?
Not at this time.
So even though they've made that statement, we have to ignore it?
Sure. Sure. All right. Secondly, I guess in the current configuration, I understand the zoning right, R-40, I mean, and this private residence, they could cut down every single tree on that whole lot, correct? All the way to the property line?
That's correct. And they are, with one of the conditions that they're offering, they would be preserving some trees along the rear property.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that, that they could have the right to cut them all down if we don't do anything, correct? Okay?
Other questions or comments, Ms. France?
First comment to the applicant, thank you for actually going through this process and rezoning the property and complying with Carey's rules and regulations instead of just doing an exempt subdivision, which you could do by right. So we really appreciate that. Thank you. To the shared driveway comment, I don't know that I really care. Quite frankly, if I had to share a driveway with somebody else, I probably wouldn't buy the house. Who's going to maintain it, fix it, leave below it, whatever? I'm like, I'm not doing that. So I get the public safety concern, I really do, but that's a non-issue for me. Other than that, at the end of the day, we're approving the subdivision of a lot so they can build one more house. And they've conditioned it. I mean, I hate to use the word no-brainer, but this is no-brainer.
Other comments? Questions? Okay. This is going to go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. It'll be a few months before we see it back, probably March, I'm guessing, February maybe?
March sounds like it.
March, yeah. And so we'll see it back then, at that time. Thank you. We now move to, thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item, 6.1, is adaptive stormwater grant from Southeast Sustainable Communities Fund. Director of Special Projects, Ms. Dana Widmar, will present this item and council may take action.
Good evening. I am so pleased to announce that the town has been awarded a $300,000 grant funded over two years at $150,000 per year from the Southeast Sustainable Communities Fund. The fund is a partnership between the Candida Fund, the Kresge Foundation, and the Southeast Sustainable Directors Network. Our sustainability staff, Emily Barrett and Shushi Gupta, are leaders in the Southeast Sustainable Sustainability Directors Network. Emily and Shushi worked with a multi-departmental team to develop an innovative approach to this grant proposal. It furthers our adaptive stormwater approach and strengthens our ties with citizens and local municipal nonprofit and academic partners. We are here to ask for your approval to accept the first year's funds for grants, but first I'd like to tell you a little bit more about the grant. The purpose of the Southeast Sustainable Communities Funds is to accelerate the adoption of sustainable best practices in southeast communities by funding projects that implement local sustainability solutions and serve as models for other communities. Carey is one of just six communities across the southeast to be awarded the grant. As we discussed in our work session in November, the adaptive approach to stormwater is currently being piloted in the downtown area where development occurred prior to 2000 when the town established modern stormwater regulations. The Walnut Creek Watershed is 2.9 square miles in Carey and 43 square miles in Raleigh. Raleigh is our downstream neighbor in the Walnut Creek Watershed. One of the recent recommendations of the Triangle Regional Resilience Assessment was that jurisdictions should work together using a basin approach. This grant is one opportunity to advance this working relationship with Raleigh as well as NC State University. This grant will fund three key actions. First, it will allow us to strengthen relationships in the watershed, allowing special emphasis on enhanced outreach to our most vulnerable residents and property owners. We will have a conversation with them about how the town can help them build resilience, personal resilience, as well as explore ways the town can guide them regarding property retrofits to mitigate impacts of flooding. We plan to connect these groups with the work of the Community Emergency Response Team. Second, it allows us to evaluate and potentially implement incentives for green infrastructure, similar to the city of Raleigh's Rainwater Rewards program. We will also explore ways the town could reduce the impacts of increased impervious surface by finding opportunities to use green stormwater infrastructure in the right-of-way. Third, it will allow us to partner with Step Up Ministries and Dorcas Ministries to connect with residents in the Walnut Creek Watershed who are seeking gainful and steady employment in green infrastructure construction and landscape skills, as well as with apprenticeships in the field. Additionally, Carey and the city of Raleigh will work with the North Carolina State University Biological and Agricultural Engineering Department Cooperative Extension to develop a technical training program specifically designed for this project and the joint success of both cities' green infrastructure efforts. Staff recommends that council recognize the award of $300,000 and accept the first year funds of $150,000. And I'll accept any questions. You may have.
Thank you, Ms. Widmar. Questions?
Don, this is like one of your no-brainers.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Why would we not accept $300,000? Yeah, let's think about that, right?
I just want to thank you, staff, everybody who's been working on the stormwater issues, especially over the last year, Sean, everybody. You've heard how important this is to council and how important it is to the community, and you guys are acting on it, and you're not just trying to fix it. And you're going outside looking for other resources and ways to handle this. So, well done. Y'all are awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Great staff working on this.
We approve this.
There's a motion.
A second.
And a second, and a third. Discussion.
The only thing I would add is I think this is the first time where I've seen stormwater and grant and also focused on our most vulnerable citizens who are already having the challenges. So I really like the idea of that the money's going to the people who need it the most and the help the most. And I really applaud you guys for looking for something to help those who are already having difficulty.
Thank you, Laurie.
Any others? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to our last discussion item, 6.2, electronic scooters in Carey, an amendment to the town code. Assistant to the manager, Allison Hutchins, Hutchins will present this item to council, and we may take action.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Tonight, we're going to have our first conversation about scooters. And in doing so, there are some overarching themes I'd like for you to keep in mind throughout the presentation. First, by its very nature, the pace of new technology often means that regulations and laws are reactionary. Scooters, similar to Uber, represent the shift towards a shared economy and provide another example of the dynamic nature of technology. These disruptive forces prompt municipalities to examine their practices and develop new ways of thinking to meet changing demands. The second takeaway is the significance of what scooters represent in Carey and the larger story of what we're trying to accomplish. In the eyes of many, scooters are a sign of a vibrant community and serve as a sign of progress that our efforts downtown, in particular, have increased pedestrian activity. And the third takeaway is the careful and intentional nature of our recommended approach. Clarifying our ordinance appropriately balances our regulatory response in a way that doesn't impede the progress of new and exciting things. The ordinance amendment recognizes that while the presence of scooters in Carey isn't as large as other communities, it is also not something we want to leave to chance. And in many ways, we've challenged ourselves not to be limited by the choice between regulation and creativity, and that is also a theme I hope you take away tonight. Electric scooters represent different things to different people. For commuters, they can represent the elusive last mile of a transit commute. They also are relatively inexpensive to operate, and for many, by virtue of their newness, generate excitement and curiosity. For pedestrians, they can represent competition for sidewalk space. And for drivers, they can present safety concerns when mixing with vehicular traffic. Wrestling with these different competing values is necessary when the issue is new, has a diversity of opinion, and there isn't a clear solution. We know that the regulatory environment for scooters will continue to evolve. At the same time, the demand and volume is likely to increase. As a national indicator, Ford recently announced acquiring an electric startup, which speaks to the potentially larger role scooters may play in the transportation conversation. Major U.S. cities have wrestled with the arrival of scooters and responded differently. Some cities have enacted complete bans on scooters until regulations are in place. Others, such as Charlotte, have implemented pilot programs that mimic their approach to dockless bike shares. And closer to home, Raleigh, Durham, and Apex have brought forward varying approaches. Raleigh created an encroachment agreement and fee structure for scooter companies. Alternatively, Durham did not allow scooters until a regulatory framework was developed. And Apex recently approved an ordinance banning scooters and skateboards on sidewalks in their downtown areas. Scooters were first spotted in Carey the beginning of September, and since then, the activity and volume has been variable, but on a scale much smaller than Raleigh. Although our experience has differed, it remains important to consider how the advent of scooters applies to our current ordinances. And in doing so, we identified an ordinance that could be strengthened to better anticipate future demands. Section 28.6 of the Code of Ordinances currently prohibits certain types of obstructions on public rights of way, including our sidewalks and greenways. And it was adopted at a time when the concern was prohibiting unauthorized placements of gates and barriers and more traditional obstructions. Keeping sidewalks and other public spaces clear for pedestrians is an important value for the town, and the requested amendment clarifies obstructions of all types, electric scooters being just one example, are prohibited and provides staff authority to clear such obstructions as necessary. The ordinance amendment doesn't remove scooters, but simply addresses those that are obstructing public rights of way by providing staff the authority to clear them by moving them out of the right-of-way. And it does not regulate where you can ride scooters. In fact, the legal status of scooters under North Carolina law is unclear, and the General Assembly has been reviewing proposed changes that would clarify where scooters may be operated. Despite some areas that remain in flux, we have enhanced information on our website that may be helpful for scooter riders, similar to the tips that we offer for pedestrians and bicyclists. For example, like bicycling, if you choose to ride a scooter, please wear helmets for safety, ride with the flow of traffic, and yield to pedestrians. And likewise, we ask that riders take care to park scooters upright and clear of sidewalks and other passageways, such as handicap ramps, bus stops, benches, as well as clear of entryways into businesses or buildings. As we move forward, we recognize the need for continued learning. Ongoing, proactive, and strategic monitoring will remain important as we take into account changing conditions. This will allow adaptations to our approach whenever and wherever they may become appropriate. We will do this by listening to the sentiments of our citizens and maintaining an open dialogue with scooter companies to determine what will work best for Carey in the future. With all of that being said, our first step is the recommendation before you tonight. And so with that, staff recommends that council adopt the attached ordinance clarifying that obstructions of all types are prohibited in public streets, sidewalks, and greenways, and provides staff clear authority, but not the obligation, to clear such obstructions as necessary. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
So, that's interesting. So let's say there's an e-scooter on a sidewalk next to the downtown square. Where are you going to put it? In the street? Can't. In the park? Can you? Got to move it off the sidewalk. So where does it go?
Our main.
Way.
In the tree.
Our main concern is just making sure there's an adequate passageway.
Yeah.
For accessibility of pedestrians.
So you would put it on the side of the sidewalk? Okay. Just curious. Other questions, comments?
One thing that I wanted to make a comment about is, so many people are talking about scooters now. The thing that I find worthwhile about this is that the presence of scooters actually supports a lot of the things that we've been talking about for protective bike lane. Because sidewalks were designed for walkers, for pedestrians, and some runners, that some of them run really fast and you have to get out of the way. But, I mean, that's what they're designed for. They weren't designed for a vehicle going at 15 miles per hour or faster that requires almost 30 feet to stop. I mean, they just weren't designed for that. So any of the accidents that we see on social media, et cetera, it's not just because these vehicles don't really fit or are designed for the sidewalk. They really should be on the road, in a bike lane, and hopefully, in a protected bike lane. Because I don't think cars are really thrilled about them being there either. They're hard to see. They're much harder to see than a bicycle even. So I think that some of the things we've been talking about, about Fenton and about cycle tracks and protected bike lanes, you know, are, actually support the scooters being in this mobility mode as well. And I'm hopeful that that might be where they end up, and not on the sidewalk.
I just want to thank staff for taking their time on this and not rushing to enact something like other municipalities have done. I think what some of the cities around us, our neighbors, have done, just the knee-jerk reactions or just looking at it as a revenue stream or tax them out of the community, I think they've been very short-sighted. And so I applaud you all for, you know, right now, let's continue to study this, take our time, make sure we get it right, but let's make sure that our sidewalks are clear and people have a place to walk. So I think we're going about this the right way and not rushing to judgment, so.
And I agree with you, and at the same time, the legislature's taking this up.
Exactly. Exactly. We don't know how they're going to classify them and when they do whatever they do. And so, no, I just, it's the Carey way. Do it the right way.
I like the way you began the presentation by saying this is our first conversation on this issue, because I'm sure we'll have more after the General Assembly gets a hold of it. Really, what this does, it just clarifies what our ordinance already says. It brings it up to date, I guess. It allows for all obstructions, which includes scooters, and just common sense.
Just for a point of clarification, we still have the law that says that if you're under 16 or under, you have to wear a helmet.
I believe it's 15, but yeah.
15 and under. Okay, 15 and under. Okay, I just need to be able to tell my kids.
Yeah.
All right. No, it's still the law.
Good point. Other questions, comments, or motion?
Yeah, I mean, the one, there's an irony here, because those of you who read Mad Magazine, you know, those of you that are more intellectual, like maybe like Mad Magazine, back in the 50s when it started.
They still print them?
One of the first publications was talking about how Americans were getting lazy and fat and the end of the world because scooters were going to take over everything. So I just want you to know, Mad Magazine back in 58, somewhere around there, maybe closer to 60, was already predicting we were going to deal with this problem, and I think it's.
And that's why we love you, Jack, for the history.
There was also, there's also a very enlightening South Park episode. Language warning, but it's pretty entertaining and educational.
Moving on from that.
And I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment, section 28.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Hutchins. All right. We have no closed session, do we? I don't think so. No closed session. So I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Should we make a motion adjourned for Christmas?
Motion to adjourn for Christmas.
There's a motion and a second, and for Hanukkah.
For Hanukkah, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.[1718.88]